Rose, we're recording everything. Are you recording everything?
We're sure on the TV.
I don't know if we're recording, but...
All right, well, just so that you know, everybody's being recorded twice. Both with Kathy over on the machine there and Paul with the video camera.
This is great transparency. We can move in that direction in Mesa County.
Okay, good.
Take the recorder and shred it.
John doesn't believe in transparency.
We're not on recording yet, so you've got to repeat that.
She's on the air. Paul is on the air. You guys got everything. Let's go ahead and do roll call for us. At least Kathy, would you do that part?
Commissioner Jen House, Chairman Martin, Commissioner Sampson.
Here.
Rose, you want to call your role?
I don't think it's on.
Stuart?
Rose Pablici, Mesa County Commissioner.
John Justman, Mesa County Commissioner.
And Commissioner McGinnis is otherwise engaged at the moment and may be joining us later.
All right, let's rise and recite the pledge on allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Always like one custom that I always do is a moment of silence so we can clear our heads so that we can get things going here, get in the right thought process. Thank you very much. It's going to be a joint work of shopping and those that don't have an agenda, there are some available, sharing if the copies will all be dispersed. So, we're going to just open up first with citizens. Any citizen with an item that is about the agenda that they really need to talk about first? Everybody's got something to do with this one. Let's talk about the American Lands Council. Rose?
So, in October, John Justman and I attended the American Lands Council conference in Lake City and received a lot of really great information about transfer of public lands back to the states. We have since joined the American Lands Council as a member. There's a thousand dollars, which I believe is for the year. And we were just curious what your thoughts were, if you were joining. I know Montrose has joined and there are other western counties we're considering. But I think we just wanted to talk briefly about your thoughts on the American Lands Council.
Do you want me to say something first or...? I believe in what the American Lands Council is doing. In fact, I believe in it wholeheartedly. I am concerned about their application in the state of Colorado. And my concern stems from our, where we go to the Constitution and vote on amendments and so forth. And I really would not be comfortable with all this state having public lands and issues such as wilderness and so forth going to a vote of the public. I would rather deal with the federal government and the bureaucracy and the ineptness that we have with that group than be in that position. I would like to see the state of Utah and the other states move forward with this, but I just don't think it's right for Colorado. I think for a thousand dollars, it might be worth it to show support and be members, but I would not push anything as a commissioner like that in Colorado. That's my take on it.
Well, the reason, Mr. Chairman, that I place this, I guess you place it, I both place it too, is Alan Gardner, the Commissioner from St. George. And I'm trying to think what county is St. George.
Washington County.
Washington County, St. George area. He calls me about every two months and lobbies and so on and so forth. And I told him we would be meeting today and discussing this. And I shared many of the sentiments that Tom has there. I agree with their overall basic fabric, I guess you might say, of what they're trying to do. But I told him that now we in Garfield County seem like are fighting with the federal government, which many of the things we're going to talk about here, sage grouse, RS 2477, management plans, on and on and on and on. And I said, I just don't know if we want to take on another fight with the federal government. Things like that, we fight with the federal government so much. So, that's kind of where I'm at, but I agree with Tom again that if a thousand dollars help them out and so on and so forth, I think they have a basis there that's good, really encourage those states. I think Utah definitely, as far as I follow it, is leading the charge. But also, there's quite a push in Nevada, is it? And what other states?
Alaska.
Alaska is not a... yeah.
Alaska had a delegation of 12 or 14 people, including the lieutenant governor and their attorney general.
And their Director of Natural Resources all came to the conference, which I thought was very impressive.
But the political landscape in Utah and Nevada are much different than Colorado's. If the state line was at the Continental Divide, this side of the mountain, Nevada did. It might work, but the front range and the money, I told them over there, the money and the power is on the front range. And they don't have federal lands to mount or anything to the east. The political landscape, as we all know, in Utah is quite a bit different than here.
And Nevada.
And Nevada.
And Alaska.
They have this, never really, I looked at that American Land Council map. There's a little white strip across IE that's their private property. And then there's this little speck down in the corner, which I thought should be bigger for Las Vegas. And the people in Nevada, at least the people at that meeting, we've seen them at the Western Regionals. They're pretty adamantly sick and tired of putting up with the feds and they're grazing. But what I found interesting at that meeting was in the northwest, it's not oil and gas that are irritating, it's the forest management.
Timber.
Timber. And the one guy from either Washington or Oregon, and he was a Commissioner close to mine, is the way he looked. And he said their county is just, that spot of owl is in their county. And he said, they're down to where I think if you call the sheriff's office and get it recorded, we're open from eight to five, Monday through Friday, you'll have to wait till you go back in the office to get help. But he said that, if he said seventy, up there forest land in their county, thirty percent of it's managed by the state. And it's managed like a forest should be managed. And he said, the seventy percent that's managed by the feds, the thirty percent state forest land produces seven or eight times the revenue to the county that they get off the federal land, because he said they're actually managing it like a forest should be managed. And it's all the timber industry, even Northern California is the same thing. They're very concerned about timber and Chinese ships making plywood right off the, how can be, whatever it is, twelve mile limit or whatever it takes to be out of the jurisdiction of the US. So, it was kind of interesting to me that it wasn't oil and gas, it was the lumber industry. And then another proposal was that they talked about was, you might know more about than I do, John, but the feds were talking about, what, a fifty mile setback or a twenty-five mile setback from the ocean? And these people weren't very happy about that either.
Any kind of development, any kind of use, et cetera, to give protected zone. It's actually interesting. It might get into international waters at far after seven miles. I look at the American Lands Council as the information, as I do also. I know this is going to shock a couple of people. I also belong to the Wilderness Society and I get all of their information. And the reason I do that is simply to get different points of view and different information on the same type of subjects and balance that particular information. And American Lands Council has, yes, a certain set of ideals and directions. That's good. We should understand what it is and how it operates. And the other thing, Wilderness Society, Wilderness Workshop, the Sea Europe, et cetera. They all have different points of view. Autobots Society, Trend Lock too as well. And that is so that I can, again, get all of the information on both sides and make the right decision. So, I don't mind joining American Lands Council for that reason.
Well, Nick, I think you guys raised some great points. You know, one of the, there's definitely a lot of issues. And one of the things I found really interesting is out of the fourteen states that attended the conference, Colorado had three people, John, me, and Don Coram from Montrose, for the whole state. And so, you can see that throughout the other states, I mean, they had good contingencies of people coming for information. Colorado's definitely behind the curve in that sense. Utah, Nevada are going to be taking the lead on any sort of federal action. And so, to be honest with you, I don't know that there's very much we can do at this point. Because let them tread, they're willing and able and financially in a position to tread that road before we are. So, but I do share some of those concerns. And one of the things, you know, John and I have been talking in a lot of different conferences and meetings about this conference. And the one thing that really concerned me and also concerned a representative from Wyoming is that the legal theory that they're proceeding under is called the equal footing doctrine. Basically, when the colonies became states and then the next state was going to come into the union, they were trying to figure out, well, will they be on equal footing as the original colonies? And the language in there talks about disposal of land. So, all of the power is concentrated on the east coast because they were able to dispose of the land and thus have the population. Whereas in the western part of the world, we have a lot of public lands which are not developed. And so, we will never be on equal footing, the theory is, with eastern states. Because unless we dispose of the land, we will never have the population base that, you know, New York's going to have or some of these other states. And what I had brought up and what this representative from Wyoming had brought up was, well, so if you're going to sue under this equal footing doctrine and then you win, what it means is that we have to then dispose of the land. And they said, well, no, that means they can go back to the state and the state can decide they want to dispose it. But that's not what the equal footing doctrine says. And so, what we were worried about is, well, will China come in and buy up Mesa County? They could. There's nothing to stop it. And then someone had said, well, we'll just, we'll put in a clause that says you can't, you have to be a citizen of the United States to buy the land. And they said, well, that doesn't stop China from funneling money into someone, some organization and buying all this land. And is that what we really want? And isn't part of the appeal of where we live, our public lands and ineptness? So, there are definitely going to be some issues that have to be overcome and agreed. You know, we've joined it because we enjoy the information and the camaraderie amongst other counties and states that have issues with public lands and the federal government. Whether or not Colorado actually gets to the point of transfer, I don't know. But I do think it's a long way out. But I've been saying, I think the war really comes if they ever do take away the hills. That's when the war starts.
Look, I thought they said also that if you dispose of the public lands, they sold them, ninety-five percent of that money goes to the federal government. So, there's not this incentive to even try to do that. And it excludes the wilderness areas and the parks and et cetera from the takeovers. I mean, if you probably want to say that. And I was kind of surprised because there was a few amount of people there from New Mexico. And they were mad as hornets over some grazing permit cancellation last year or the year before. And Arizona was there, they had a few people involved. And Montana, I would say it's Utah, Nevada, and Montana are the...
Leaders.
And Idaho. Then there was, you know, there was people that from Washington.
John and I attended the discussion, I guess you could say. I was disappointed the one guy from CU didn't make it. I guess he came later.
He came later.
We didn't get that, but it was very interesting to hear Representative Ken Ivory, who's, I guess, the leader of the American Lands Council. He's very, very stoic, very well-spoken. I was impressed with what he did have to say. So, maybe that's something you could consider our next meeting or if you like, for early agenda, but maybe in February, a thousand dollars for them and so on, pick it around.
That would be out of your association and membership, Drew, to help on the land. Now, just a trivia question. The last state to receive lands under the transfer of lands from federal government, don't you dare say anybody in this room know the last state that received lands that were transferred from the federal government to the state?
Illinois.
Yeah, Illinois.
Illinois. Do you remember what year? Oh, eighteen fifty-four.
There's a good book out by Wayne Hayes, who's now deceased. He lost his ranch in Nevada to the feds. But it talks, just talks completely about the history of public lands and how they became public lands. It talks about the dynamics in the eastern coast and the power brokers and the dynamics of the conservation groups and how they work together really to keep the power on the east coast, the money on the east coast. And Margaret Byfield, who is his daughter, has some of those books. I'll try to get those to you. But it talks about the property, there actually are property rights on federal lands. And they are the grazing rights, there are the mineral leases, there are the ski area permits. And, but more and more, the federal government is pushing back and saying, no, they are just leases. But it gives a complete history, it's a good book. I'll try to get some of those in, send them over to you, to the Commissioner. Drew, can you make sure that's put on after one man?
Next guy.
Thanks.
Put it on for the second actually. Thursday.
Can you do it?
Today's Thursday. If we get in today, we can.
Okay.
The mineral ownership bill, this is a piece of legislation that I'm working on. And this is to assist numerous issues of bookkeeping, right down to the unplanned dollars that we go to the state and that goes under the Great Colorado Giveaway type issue. This is clarifying the intent of ownership, of transfer of roads, lands for roads, et cetera. Make sure that if there are no exclusions or no set asides or anything else, that the intent of the owners to actually to transfer what could be mineral rights under a strip of road. However, that, again, is defined within the legislation. The energy companies, as well as research entitled companies, have blanks. And those blanks don't go to any mineral right owners because there has been either a transfer or a deed title or free simple, et cetera, go to the county for county roads. This would just identify those so that those monies that are collected on very small portions of road could go to the counties. And again, there's a hurdle there, there's a challenge. That could be challenged in the process that Garfield County already has in place. So, you file that challenge and prove that those are your minerals, which assists, again, the energy companies, the bookkeepers, those folks. And these checks are really big. Sometimes they're twenty-five cents, sometimes they're a dollar, et cetera. But it adds up over the years. And those folks either hold them or send them to the county where we hold them in the treasurer's line item. And so many years, you either send it back to the state or try to dispose of it through challenges. This just allows us to use those dollars within the county for general fund purposes. And it's not whole, but it is something to claim the books. And that's, again, a whole issue. We, well, I guess, obvious because with that, Cattellments Association is also working with us on that. The mineral right holders, the national organization of mineral holders, they're also looking at it, working with us. And so is CCI. So, we'll see how it goes. Last year, it made it all the way to committee and nobody really understood what was going on because they hadn't been involved and they died. So, now we have everybody on board. We're sitting, trying to work out all the details. So, nobody loses. We only identify the unidentifiable dollars that are to go to the Great Colorado Giveaway with no owner. And if you're interested, I have a bill, a copy of the bill on the expensive, in Mesa County. That's what that is about. Any questions?
Thank you. So, will CCI Public Lands Committee be looking at this in February?
Yes. And again, we're looking for a bill sponsor. The only reason that we are is simply because we're doing the foundation so that there is no real loser on this particular bill. And we don't want the sponsor to be a loser either. It should go through the ballot first.
Thank you.
Okay.
Any questions?
BLM Resource Management, I'm hoping that that's going to be the Grand Junction office because we want to talk about, let's see, the Meeker Office or the Eagle Office that we have to deal with, that'll be the Grand Junction office.
Yeah.
You know, Colorado.
I see. So, I didn't put this on here, was this just an item just to talk about the... I think the Grand Junction Resource Management Plan or Office's Resource Management Plan should be... It's supposed to come out the end of January, which is tomorrow. And I haven't heard anything about it.
No, I thought Katie earlier in the week, in February.
So, they just keep pushing it back, which in some respect is a good thing because then there's no action to really take yet. But when it does come out, there's going to be some serious issues and them closing roads. And that's when our fight's going to start. So, you know, we'll keep you posted on what's going on for that. And I guess, do you guys have resource management plans coming out as well?
Yes, we do. Several of them. On the travel management plan out of the Grand Junction office, I believe there's only one road that has not been accepted to keep open by the BLM and we're still working on that. So, we'll have a report on that one. I'll get rifle later today by Glenn Adams, who's been working with that, that's got access person. Tom, anything on resource management?
Do you guys have an employee that's dedicated to that like we have?
I do.
That does just, we found it to be very helpful working under our legal staff. Glenn Adams, he's the retired forest ranger, district ranger from Rockville. We sparked him up and he's doing a fantastic job for us, identifying those roads, right of ways and so on and so forth. That might be something I want to consider. We've got more than enough work for him to do. He does other things, but just that keeps him very, very busy.
He's full time?
Yes. And he works under the legal staff.
Did you have anything on this resource management that you have actively with you?
No, thank you, Commissioners. We are later on your agenda to talk about a variety of things that do, talk about the BLM and some of the resource management plan work. So, we can wait till then or whatever makes sense for you all?
We can wait till then. We'll pull that back. But Kirby, you had something too on that. I think it laid over on sixty-five leases, et cetera.
Yes.
Anybody else?
I just think if you have roads in Mesa County that you're concerned about being closed and you're in Garfield County, we need to get that information to Glenn. A lot of his issues have been, actually been with private land owners where we have roads that go across private land that are gated and you can't get to the public land on the other side. Those are, so it's bigger than just federal issues in Garfield.
I think it is everywhere, Tom. That's a follow-up on page two. We have on our RS 2477 negotiation and also information exchanged with private property owners. Anything else on the RMP? Jump down again to the environmental impact statement on our sixty-five leases.
If I could ask Kirby again, David would have been carrying the weight on this to come up. Just talk about where we are, we're developing, correct?
And this is also a play off of the meeting that was down at...
Well, I didn't even realize you guys were having a conversation.
I think your planners have been on the phone, but they've been quiet. I think there's, you guys have a strong position. You would probably like to have that on the table, I guess.
I agree.
You've got to say something about it.
Me too.
Kirby? So, this dates back to, I guess, at least early 2014, a brief review we provided. And I believe you all made well of provided back in May 2014, scoping comments for the CIS. Heavy lifting, Garfield County commented on socioeconomic issues and concerns as well as throughout access routes. That's what they look with a primary thing to be pointing out then. And then in November, we provided, they asked, invited comments about the least stipulations that BLM should be considering as they go through a development strategy I asked. We provided some comments on that related to access routes, particularly to the eastern side, leases to the east. And the response that we got from BLM on that, I mean, just frankly, was that those aren't really the least stipulation type of comments that they would incorporate. When we talk about access routes, that's really more of a discussion during the permitting phase, not the DIS phase.
Would you explain your map up there so everybody understands?
You bet. I appreciate that. So, what I have here is my GIS. If we need to zoom in on anything in Mesa County, Garfield County, we sort of do it. It's a lot of GIS. The areas that you see in gray are the six, are sixty-four of the sixty-five leases. There's one very small lease up in Rio Blanco County that's too far north to really give you context, but there's one up there. So, the Thompson Divide area are those gray boxes there. Kind of their kind of north-south trending, those leases on that eastern edge of that map. The Mesa County boundary is in green. And so, you can see the Garfield Mesa County line goes right across the middle of the map. And then the Mesa County line, of course, sort of jogs and goes generally to the southwest and the drop side, the south end of the map. You can see a little bit of Delta County and Victor County as well. The red lines are Garfield County roots, roads. I don't have y'all's layers on there. And then again, as was mentioned, you can see the bulk of the leases are in Mesa County. Certainly Mesa County is an issue of concern. There's a dotted red line on there. That is what is, as I said, referred to as sort of the Thompson Divide boundary as defined, I guess, by Thompson Divide provisions. The LAM force serves have been laying on the maps. It's not a line that we really understand, but what we understand...
Here's the red, I'm sorry, Kirby, just to keep people, there's lots of lines. This is the red dotted line you were speaking about, okay? Here, these are the county, these yellow lines kind of demarcate the county boundaries. And of course, here's the dividing Mesa-Garfield County line. There's another slide you had that showed the routes we talked about that come into Mesa County, I think.
Yep, I can show that as well.
That's probably going to be the work. Do you want to do it?
It's just a matter of... So, it's the...
Any question on that map?
Commissioner, these are the leases that were canceled, right, just recently?
Considered.
Yeah.
Yeah, sixty-five leases have been left. Now, they're going through EIS on those.
Right, so originally this came out of a wet river, a forest, leases that are being reconsidered. So, it was an older plan that they said for administrative reasons, still is not valid anymore. So, we're evaluating whether or not those sixty-five leases should be re-let as a way to put that. And so, the map that Kirby's got now on the screen for you shows a variety of other routes that do go into Mesa County that might be helpful for you all. We had a great conversation, we'll say with P. Five, your Roden Bridge Director, as we prepared this, so it was precursor to that, they were super helpful. So, they're aware of these things and understanding what the access challenges are for you all and moving through those. So, we outlined in our comments five routes into a variety of areas. And those are showing up in different colors there. You want to walk them through the routes, Kirby?
I can't. I work as pointers on the bases, so I don't know. Anyway, the routes, we have five routes, routes A through E. So, I guess, starting at the western side of the, I don't know.
Down at the bottom.
So, anyway, down at the bottom, there's a blue line. And so, we call it alternative A, which is up west Divide Creekway. And you can see we stopped the route basically at the Garfield County line. So, we're going from the beginning of Mesa County heading south there. The road number is like a seven point two five or something like that, I don't remember it, but... So, that was one route to get in. It takes you all the way over into this, generally, it gets you all the way into the Thompson Divide area. You can see it loops down the south and heads to the northeast. East, and actually runs up into kind of road one seventeen, four mile road eventually up there at the Conde Cora northeast. So, that's Route A. Route B is what we call Uncle Bob, because it goes along, goes by Uncle Bob mountain area. And that's in pink, right in the middle of the map. And again, going from northwest to the southeast down into some of the east areas. The third alternative is up east Divide Creek area. That's in yellow, right in the middle of the map, basically goes from the north down to the south. And it joins these other routes there, right smack in the middle of the map by that big white circle there. And then the last route is alternative... And then the, uh, the last route is, uh, alternative, oh, excuse me, alternative D is in green. That's kind of an interesting one to talk about. It's a route, there is an access, access that could be created through there. There's historic, uh, county routes that right away through there, that green line, that would be one way that could be improved and utilized as some extension to some of those leases.
That'd be about three miles into the road, which would be, that was the original road from Silt to Glenwood Springs. It's in an area called Road, Road Gulch, which was a historic route, uh, that has grown over, so it would be a challenge with the Forest Service, however. That is a county road. Or it's county right of way. There's no road there.
This is the, the fifth route, alternative D. Uh, it goes a lo, by the Baldy Mountain area, uh, from a Garfield County road. You can see most of that route, we show it, the name Garfield County, and then connecting with kind of road one seventeen, uh, up there. Much better than the higher country up in there. So that's what we provided to the, uh, to the BLM. Uh, we also provided information less detailed than this. We hadn't done the analysis on what routes actually could be used easily with some improvement. But during the, the Forest Service preparation of their oil and gas leasing, E I S, we had to provide comments about alternative routes that should be considered. But we also provided this during our most recent, during the lease stipulation process for the existing leases, E I S. And again, the BLM, they were very, very interested in this. Those, we don't see those as a lease stipulation type thing. We don't manage other people's roadways. So we're talking about county roadways joining Forest Service roadways, and so they're really like that. Especially Forest Service, but BLM do it, their federal road system.
Now, that was an interesting comment that BLM made, because Forest Service definitely decides which route is going to be done in the course of their leasing process. They identify a road that you have to use, and, and that road has also caused the issue on the four mile court of through Glenwood Springs. They specify that's the only route that is going to be approved by the Forest Service. So.
Different.
Between Forest Service and BLM, BLM doesn't care, Forest Service does. Interesting comments and approach to leasing.
Our most recent, so this is not, our most recent thing that we've done, we've provided, uh, the BLM asked all the participants, the cooperating agencies in the, uh, existing leases, E I S process, uh, to evaluate the U S Forest Service's, um, final E I S for the White River Oil and Gas Leasing Lands. They should, by the White River, they should force, it's a very lengthy document. So we did carve through that, and we looked at it, and we did provide, and the reason the BLM during their E I S, asking us what the Forest Service document is, is there some analysis in the final E I S for the Forest Service leasing decision process that was lacking? There's something that they should augur in and perhaps do additional or more updated analysis to assure that this draft E I S is as, is, as useful as possible and actually covers the topic.
I was only going to add, part of that is because the Forest Service is right now in its objection period. So, um, it was really, uh, a request to people who had already commented on the Forest Service's E I S. Now that they're in this sort of final window, do you have objections to it to make those comments? And that's what's tying these two together.
That's true, yeah. So there's, there's two comments. One directed at the Forest Service to object to anything in the F E I S or the leasing document. Those comments, they say they'll listen to anything and everything from anybody, I guess, but, but generally the, the protocol is you can object to things and they will earnestly look at things that you actually participated on previously during the preparation of it. So you comment on topic X, and then you see how they actually laid out the F E I S. You say, wait a minute, that's not appropriate. You guys missed the mark. But they might not, uh, listen as much if you comment about something you didn't even bother to warn them about two years ago. But, so, so there's two pieces. One, commenting to the Forest Service. And then what I'm talking about specifically is we just, we have provided some comments to the BLM on the existing leases, E I S. So again, they ask, do you see any deficiencies in the Forest Service work? If you want us to take a closer look and incorporate our plan for our consultants to do additional analysis and flesh out. The topics that we touched on were environmental justice and, uh, direct and indirect, uh, impacts common to all the alternative in the F E I S. We also called out that there's an opportunity to have more relevant, timely, detailed socioeconomic information that they could incorporate into the existing leases, E I S. And then the other one, uh, topic that, just to be consistent, we also mentioned transportation and commuting impacts, uh, type of comments. So we've invited BLM to sit down with us in the calendar to talk in detail. We think we got some data that's useful to them. So that's what we provided here this week, actually.
And Kirby, can you talk about the latest study you did with B B C? It was geared towards the Rome Plateau, but, um, showed the, the value per, per well after they've done, uh, at least socioeconomic issues, wages and taxes and so forth.
So, uh, and this is for us, it would consider very related to this existing leases process, because it's the same question almost at the same time for a slightly different geographic area. For the Rome Plateau S E I S process, we did, as a cooperating agency, we did engage, uh, very closely with, uh, BLM to discuss socioeconomic topics and issues. And what we found is they really did have sort of a dart of useful, defensible data on, okay, if you have ten wells has or a hundred, or two wells or two thousand, as they make decisions and increase or decrease the number of wells or leases and, and actual on-the-ground activity, what is the socioeconomic impact or benefit, as it were, plus or minus? And so they invited us and we worked with a consultant, B B C consultant, and with industry to gather up the type of data that BLM really wasn't within their ability to wrap their arms around. And so we brought in specific data on how much does it cost to drill a well from the top of Rome, from down the slopes, down to the bottom? Where does that money go? Where's the, where's the, the capital, personnel, uh, cost expenses? How do they filter into the, at local and regional economy? And so we provide a, I think, a fairly detailed, uh, bit of information that they will be plugging into their modeling for Rome S E I S. So that's relevant for today's discussion, because, uh, that was one of the comments we've provided to them for the existing leases is, we believe you probably would benefit from having the same kind of information in this existing leases, E I S. And so we're asking them, like we did before, exactly what would that look like and when would you need it? So we can figure out Garfield County might, uh, collaborate with BLM, get them that information, because it has to be very timely or it's just going to be too late. So we succeeded, I think, very well. They were, they very much appreciated the information we gave to the Rome, and they're certainly going to play it in. So we hopefully provide additional information. Just just up in their grasp to get their hands on as well as we can.
And let me add to that. Another part of our strategy was in bringing on B B C, was this will not be, I suspect, the last time that we look at oil and gas issues. And so, uh, this, this hasn't really been evaluated to the level that we've asked B B C to help us do that. So as these, as these next endeavors come on, whether it's an E I S or whatever the issue happens to be with respect to oil and gas development, we'd be able to have some of this information that's going to be useful, not just now, but well into the future, we hope. So another part, sort of a broader bank of buck.
And that information is available to Mesa County as well, so we can provide that.
Yeah. Yeah, I think you'd be interested in seeing that.
Yeah, absolutely.
We'll do that.
And not to muddy the waters, you also have to think about endangered species and other uses and also other types of extraction from mining to grazing to timber and what have you, and how that plays on the socioeconomic, because each one of those contribute one way or another, which you got to consider.
But doesn't make it muddy, John, at all?
No, it just makes it a little more, should we say, uh, complex, but we still have to, to put it in all those recreation hunting on, uh, all aspects on your, uh, land use and the decision making. And then you can always throw in routes, uh, or, or rights of way, uh, private and otherwise. And it continues to compound the issue, but you have to sort through them. It makes it good, uh, comments. Really, Kirby, to look in depth more than just the surface. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to go off on that soapbox there, Kirby. I'm sorry.
Uh, Kirby, can we go back to the first slide, the back one?
He's got his pointer down. Did you try it out, Kirby?
Not to lie.
Stuart did it, did you? Did your favorite brought you a pointer?
He gave it to me earlier. He gave me two, and I forgot what was what. So this will either make the machine turn off or report. I wanted to point out the Mesa County line and the Thompson Divide line right there. And in talking to, um,
It's Mesa County.
In talking to the Thompson Divide, uh, director, they are, because they don't have the support of the Mesa County commissioners, they're willing to drop that out of their, out of their area. And that's something we tried, we tried to bring across to the BLM, we'll continue to. But that, that does, uh, so it, so there's a number of leases that are, uh, if we're in Thompson Divide, it'll drop off because they're in Mesa County. So, yeah, right there at that corner. And those are all pretty much accessed from West Divide, right on those leases. Yeah, and note, if you don't mind, I don't have the layer on here. I can show it, but in the F E I S from the Forest Service, they declared all these lands, basically kind of using this line as what it looked like, that is no longer available for leasing. So they're blotting out this area right here, which may not be leased already, to never be leased. And yet it's not draining into the crystal, the North Thompson, into the border port.
Does that sound right?
Yeah, I guess it sounds. So that's just something to know. And it, interesting, I'll put that, what are the, uh, three counties come together there? Kirby, can you point them?
Oh, hi, up, up, right there. There is, there is a cornerstone there and a lay down fence, and there's a very large, um, cattle grazing operation there summertime. I do the new slanted thing, but it is also one of the best hunting areas up in that area. And it goes back and forth. That's quite an area, a few shed corridor, uh, great grasslands. And it looks right off into the, uh, into the coal country, which is a little bit to the south of there, here on it. And there used to be a railroad that used to run up through there and went right past that spot. So it's really an interesting development area, uh, many, many years ago, a hundred years ago, when that railroad went through there, it was a narrow gauge, but it hauled coal and everything else here. Though there are lots of roots up there, lots of, uh, rights of way and what have you, but right now the fence is slaying down the old, we didn't take it up in it and these. Just to point that it is an active lease, grazing lease, but it's also mineral lease with that.
And many times in the winter, never in the summer.
A snowmobile country up there. Okay, that's all. I want to make sure that it's an interesting spot. It's a very, um, how should you say, uh, can generate revenue in many ways.
Kirby and Fred, who are your main contacts at Mesa County? I, I mean, on this issue or any of the other issues, who's on the phone with you?
Mostly it's Keith, uh, who's, who's really good. And he's been on the phone with these other E I S, uh, meetings, but most parts of corporate agency. I'm trying to think of.
Randy.
Yep, Randy Price. Yep, so those typically are the two key folks, most commonly.
Do you guys have breakover calls or how often do you have these calls?
I'd say about monthly. So these are corporate agency meetings? And between calls, there are times where it's a homework and some sort of other room you prepare for each of those meetings, which, uh, can you?
Well, of course, the ones that we're involved in with the Rome and the sixty-five leases are all out of the middle Colorado River Valley Field Office in Silt. And so I know that the work that you all have been doing with the Grand Junction Field Office is out of Grand Junction for now, so there's, you know, there is that, that distance between offices, but.
Can you continue any more about Thompson Divide that you aren't talking, just included in this conversation as well, anything that, I know will be on? Because it's a, a topic down the way, and I thought maybe we could throw that in.
A little bit of that there. I don't, I mean, that's out of my range, but still, I'm quick.
Uh, Picking, Picking County's been very active in, with, with their, uh, philosophy on, on gas, has been very active in these as well. You should surely use your perspective on this, uh, in these meetings.
Commissioner, the only thing I was going to add to that was, uh, with the BLM's, um, cooperating agency meeting structure at these Silt meetings, particularly with the sixty-five leases, it's been very interesting. And as an observation, um, it's been a very open door by that field office, which is kind of a rare duck, in my opinion anyway, uh, in terms of, uh, uh, access to pre-decisional information. And so, um, it's not common, I guess is the best way to put it. So you have a variety of stakeholders physically in the room who are not formal cooperating agency folks.
They can't come, but they, they can listen.
They can listen. They can listen. And that, you know, was one of the philosophy of the former, uh, well, Steve Bennett, who was the, the, the head of that office. But that is different. You know, typically it's a pretty closed structure. Uh, anyway, so I, just as a point of comment.
Speaking of the name Bennett, I noticed in the newspaper that there was renewed interest in reference to the Thompson Divide legislation. I had a conversation with his staff, his chief of staff. They said, well, we're always open to that. Uh, we don't know of any new information that we can include, and there is no bill drafted. And we're not sure what will be in the bill, because they haven't set down to, to refine it, other than, again, what has been proposed. So, uh, even though the newspaper said there's going to be reintroduction of the Thompson Divide, they're not sure what's going to be in. I just want to make sure that they're willing to wear that from the, from the senator's office. Anybody has information, I guess, needs to work with the, uh, chief of staff on that one, other than what we've already proposed. We should be working out the details of that.
Not just quickly, I had to mention this. This area in pink, those are the areas that, uh, Forest Service and the F E I S has said it is closed to consideration of future of this. For the, for the lifespan of the, of the F E I S, we've got twenty years. So here's a big chunk of your Mesa County area that comes to the west into Mesa County that's closed, uh, according to the Forest Service. That wouldn't be on any leases in that area. These stuff with, uh, with, uh, ash, uh, are considered, it's open for development. So that thing I have is, again, we welcome working with your staff directly as we navigate this existing leases process. We've talked to them solid. And, uh, as the commissioner mentioned, uh, there's really a lot of room for Mesa County voice at the table to make sure the BLM knows what's, uh, what's the strength of payment on, there are a few things that need, uh, processed.
And one of the strong ones is, uh, do you understand what a federal unit is and, uh, federal units that have been proven by production are also being considered as possible withdrawal simply because of the Forest Service issue? Uh, and they've been in production. Again, through, through federal statute, they were created. How are they going to dissolve them if they do? And they'll need your comments on that. To dissolve it or not dissolve it, from what you see as a protocol. Because there are two federal units up there that have been proven through production.
And there's, and actually the acreage hung up in these units, it may actually exceed the acreage of the actual leases.
Exactly.
And so they're all linked in together, and so it's hanging up, uh, sort of significant development plans on private land because of this process. As an operator planner, then, we're looking at their capital expenses and their plans to develop an area, not a lease, and that's why you have a unit. So now they don't know if the, the federal part of it is going to be available or not, so.
Excellent.
Real challenge, I understand.
I guess.
One last thing, got you going on. Um, in terms of the Forest Services document, in most, in particular, the BLM's E I S that we're, we're doing right now, one of the latest things that, that we're tasked with evaluating is, is the BLM's approach of what they call a reasonable development, reasonable foreseeable development scenario. So what I mean by that is, across these leases, the, originally the Forest Service said, well, we anticipate, I think it's four hundred and forty-four wells across the sixty-five leases. And so the BLM has designed an approach of allocating possibly, uh, where those wells fall. Basically the three zones. Two of the zones are, are predominantly in Mesa County. So as you go from the west, east, you have the block of leases on the far west. So as you go from the west, east, you have the block of leases on the far west. That's zone one, and in the middle is zone two, and on the far right, kind of where we're looking now is what they call zone three. So I would just encourage your team to take a look at that. We are too, is that a reasonable approach of what the BLM is suggesting might be a development scenario? So where the wells go and that kind of thing. Might help you as you kind of figure out, or you're, opine on what the impacts are, what the, you know, all those kinds of...
Speaking of brought that up, there's a, something important that you could bring to the table for the BLM. And they said very candidly, well, we don't really know for sure on, because their, our, the reasonable foreseeable development scenario was based in part on known infrastructure and ability to evaluate economically. They candidly said they don't really know where all the pipelines, in this, at that view that they're looking at it, they don't really know what's actually immediately feasible. So where you know or we know as a county, um, this infrastructure that's already there, they facilitate developing. BLM's lacking that on the ground information at the thirty thousand foot view they're looking at.
Anything further on this subject? Let's jump into one that's easy, we may fly with the next one, the Gunnison and the Greater Sage Grass issue. What I'm talking about, I could do you...
Fred, could you stay at the table for, for this discussion?
Tom, good day, good day.
I, I, I'm going to just, you know, we're, I, I think is we're, uh, it's well noted that we've spent considerable amount of money on mapping on the Greater Sage Grass and found discrepancies in the mapping and have moved that forward as far as we can. And kind of waiting on a BLM, uh, record decision. And, uh, I'm going to turn it to Fred, let Fred talk more about our science, our science of what we've done and not, not just on the mapping, but how we work with, uh, Western, uh, July.
I think the intent on the agenda item two, if I may, is, uh, litigation, not legislation. It says Gunnison and Greater Sage Grass legislation, I'm not aware of any. I think it's, we're talking about something else.
Yeah. There is one, but I'll mention it.
Go ahead.
Oh, okay. So there's a lot to talk about here, I'll be as brief as I can and hopefully this is helpful. So as Commissioner Janikowski stated, we've been really, really busy at this for a long time now. The biggest effort is, is the county's mapping and habitat in our country, which is, you've heard us say this before, but it's very, very different than the rest of the national range. And why that's important is because all the science being used to evaluate the, the, uh, health of the species, so to speak, is based on this broader range characteristic. And we know that we're a very, very different country, just briefly. So we've spent a lot of money, a lot of effort to do that. So most recently, that effort was, um, fine tuned down to two highly statistically robust models. One was called the RSF model and the other's called the fuzzy model. And, uh, the point in all that is to say that we are still right exactly where we were two years ago where we said, look, we think you've over mapped, you, the BLM and CPW, but over mapped about a hundred and forty thousand acres of our country. It's just not, it's just not habitat, it is, there's no science to defend what you're saying. We understand we're all in the same boat, trying to protect the right habitat that the bird, uh, question. But to do it accurately would be a good thing. And so, um, we are right along track with that. We have completed those models, they've been independently peer reviewed around the nation. We have now submitted that document to a journal for a scientific, uh, for a formal publication, which they will go through, then their own peer review. So this will be a highly scrubbed, um, highly defensible product that hopefully then shows up as a literature search happens for people using, for best available science, because we really believe that that's the case. And that's where this debate, I think, is going to be fought, is in terms of science. So we've fully updated our county's grouse plan with that information, so that's on our website, it is live, it is as up to date as it can be. And, uh, along those same lines, uh, we're working with, trying to work with CPW. And the reason that's important is because the BLM is relying on CPW data, habitat mapping for what they produce. And all of that is what is presented to the Fish and Wildlife Service as the conservation plans that move forward across the west. We're interested, I think, I forget how many, but there's a lot, a lot of different BLM plans that are being amended to address the grouse issue. And so we want our BLM plan to be as up to date and favorably reflecting what we've done as possible. So that's really what the big push has been. The listing decision is still on, uh, the radar for now, September thirtieth of this year. It was pushed out two weeks with the recent, um, wrangling through the Augustus Bill that was signed by the President, which I'll talk about in just a second. But, um, so yes, um, as Commissioner stated, we're waiting for the BLM's final EIS to come out, which makes it way to a record decision. But the word on the street I heard is sometime this spring. Uh, I don't know exactly beyond that, um, but we're all kind of waiting. The, the, the word on that is, and I, and I say this with the yellow bill of cuckoo in the back of my brain, right? And other things that you all are facing is, um, it, it, and the chairman will correct me wherever I'm wrong, but the BLM's approach to a lot of these things now is sort of this very broad landscape approach. Most recently is their sort of unveiling what's called Planning Two Point O approach. The chairman was a, a, a lead speaker on a panel, a webinar that, that walked through some of those issues. There's several challenges to that because our fear is that the local community gets lost or washed out in those decisions, which is exactly why we've been fighting, 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 because we are different. And you cannot simply take a blanket, one size fits all approach to, to federal policy when these issues are so specific. Anyway, um, so the, the, what we understand is the Fish and Wildlife Service and the BLM are agreeing to basically roll up all of the BLM's plans that they've been working on into one broad plan. And that's why I mentioned all these things. And to us, that's a, we're very, very concerned about that. And, uh, as is the state. And so, you know, talking about the state, so John Swartout, who he worked over a while, working with the governor as his policy person, was, uh, just out here last week with us, uh, still continuing to, to, um, work with the governor and work with our federal partners, but, um, that's obviously had a big setback with the listing of the Gunnison now as threatened. And so, of course, the lawsuits now have been filed. First out of the gate was the state, followed closely by Gunnison and, um, the Utah counties. And then, and of course, the, 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 there are petitions on the other side of that, which are, we're calling them right now, but I don't, it's of the environmental sector, they're pushing those.
Wilder.
Wilder, I was thinking of Senator, uh, Bala, the diversity...
They actually, the lawsuit that was actually filed, the first one out of the gate was Biological Diversity Center and, uh, Western Waterships Project. And, and I know you're, you're maybe more involved with the Greater Sage Grouse. You don't really have the critical habitat in your county through Gunnison, but, you know, we're, we're kind of wrestling is that whether we do a notice of intent with respect to the, the Gunnison, or, you know, how, how does this, in fact, if the lawsuit's already been filed with respect to, you know, to, to the other side essentially, and, and trying to figure out how that, that impacts, you know, the way we go. Obviously, I think we're, we're hoping the state, Colorado will step up, uh, and, and kind of fire the, the first volley in, in court rather than filing the NOI. But it's, it's going to be an interesting process to...
Well, you can glean some of the information out of the, uh, the Dartfield Plan, simply you put some of the habitat goes into Mesa County, but we have one on that, a couple of different fingers that are sticking out there. In fact, I think you're sitting in one of the areas that prime habitat is, uh, perish. But it's all on top and valid floors and all of those stuff. It's not supposed to include, it's in a lot of feet on that map, it is. So that's why we improved it. And so some of those fingers and some of the information that we have should come to you so that you can use that on your decision making process.
That'd be great. And we also, um, put some money towards the Western Governor's BLMs and what they're doing in preparation for a potential listing. Um, so we're, we're definitely following that issue very closely.
And the birds are important. We're not saying that, but the overall impact, um, to humankind is what we're looking at. In our area, seventy percent of the land that's impacted is privately owned. However, these rules and regulations will, will, again, compound on them as well as the, the open area even more so. What was the disturbance percentage, seven percent disturbance or something like that? And, or, three percent, three percent cap?
Yeah, that's the, the land.
Yeah, but that, it says, yeah, but it really compounds if you get seventy seven, seventy percent private. That really says nothing happens on public land whatsoever.
Well, particularly if you have anything with federal nexus, which is, which is a bigger issue. But no, that, um, that's exactly right. So, um, there's a lot of parallel correlation and that's the copper port. Excuse me, the NTT report, so National Technical Team Report. And then the second one is for the Fish and Wildlife Service specifically, and that's the Conservation Objectives Team Report, the copper port that you referred about. The third one, probably the most important one, is what's called the Challenge of the Monograph. And this is the information that was listed originally as the first body of, of science, so to speak, that describes the challenge to the species and its habitat. I want to be careful because it's still draft, but, uh, we can share that with you and we will do that. But it's, it's fantastic, really. We, we've looked at it, it's highly scientifically technical, that's what I'd put that, but it's very good. Uh, you know, you all are familiar with the Western Governors Association's efforts and they're ongoing. And, um, I think Hickel Lippers still co-chair, although I think that's going to change here relatively soon. You know, the push there and, and where the governor is with the Secretary of Interior is to really push for let these matters be issues of state, of state, uh, let them be state matters, rather than broad federal approaches to these things. It's trying to get away from this grand landscape approach. So that's still first and foremost in where they're going.
At Mesa County, I'm a Gunnison, it's moved on both opinions Mesa. And I think almost all the properties have conservation easements, I don't know that have the birds.
Which you'd think might be enough.
You would think, but obviously not.
That's, that's a real problem, that's a real challenge. And now you've got the same thing, we, we just recently had, it was a twenty-five square miles placed into an easement in Moffett County. You know, all on the same lines, you know, the, the Gunnison story is, is highly known where you've got the state somewhere between forty and fifty million dollars and some pretty progressive tools that just simply didn't meet the mark. And my fear is the Fish and Wildlife Service is operating under this sort of model of, well, bring me, you know, bring me a rock and I'll tell you, oh, no, not that rock, bring me another rock. And, you know, I think that's unfortunately what we're faced with in terms of what will they accept? And, and it's interesting because they are also cooperating agency partners through the BLM work that we've been doing in...
Quiet partners.
Quiet partners, so...
Well, Parks and Wildlife down in the Gunnison area have spent thirty-two to thirty-three million for conservation easements to protect the bird. And there's no predator control, nothing, it's it.
Well, that's what I have, at least as an update, um, for you, hopefully that's helpful. I will fire off those drafts to you.
We should talk about the change in the BLM, because Jim Cady was, uh, was, was in charge of all that. He has since retired. And I believe the state director is now taking over, as opposed to Joe Meyer, who came in Jim's place. The state director is now, uh, take, is in charge of the BLM's project for the, the EIS, so...
And her first introduction to the Dartfield of Mesa County was at the Beck during the oil and gas sixty-five year session. That was her first day on the job.
Initiation by fire, huh?
It wasn't initiation. She's a nice lady, but, uh, again, uh, she came under a lot of, uh, on fire.
Just one last, a quick comment, yeah. So, um, Senator Gardner just blew through town here last week, I believe it was last week or week before, anyway. And so we were able to get a copy of our plan into his staff's hands. It's, it's on his radar as it is, um, Representative Tipton's and others. And, uh, so, you know, the, 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 a report that I would for, uh, point you to is called Under the Microscope that was recently published, which was, it came out of the U.S. House of Representatives Committee on Natural Resources. Chairman, or, excuse me, Commissioner Janikowski went back to Washington, testified twice during the hearings that ultimately culminated in that document, it's really good, I, I'll send it to you as well. But it just, it, it mirrors and par, parallels really what the DQW challenge is talking about. And so there's a, there's a big bright light being shined on the ESA right now. So I just wanted to mention that.
We're going to take something out of, out of order here. We're going to talk about the endangered species of rose. John, let me come to us, what you've been up against beyond the Greater Sage Grass.
So other than Gunnison and Greater Sage Grass, um, our biggest challenge right now is going to be establishing critical habitat for the yellow-billed cuckoo, which has been listed as a threatened species. The issue, we, we had a meeting about a month ago with, um, Fish and Wildlife. And I'll be honest, it was a very disturbing meeting. So they've seen one bird in Mesa County in the Tilly Bishop Wildlife Area. And the only person who saw the bird was the same guy from U.S. Fish and Wildlife that is talking to us about critical habitat. What's so frustrating, other than the fact that it's an uncorroborated story, is that the bird was in the Tilly Bishop Wildlife Center, which was set up to protect wildlife. And so we have critical habitat that is working and yet they still want to close off or potentially manage this critical habitat, um, miles and miles and miles of riverfront, um, all throughout Mesa County. And so it's kind of what Fred was talking about, this blanket approach to, well, we saw one bird on the east end of the valley, but by golly, it could get to Florida pretty easily, so let's just close off the whole riverfront trail. There's a, a lot of different issues. One is, uh, the city of Grand Junction is really nervous because they've got some future planning to do a, a nice park area along the riverfront. They've put a lot of money into the riverfront trail, which they say won't be affected, but it could be affected. Interestingly enough, I guess tamarask is actually good for yellow-billed cuckoo. So all of the, um, work that we've done to eradicate tamarass, it, it potentially could stop because the birds, this one particular bird that wasn't actually in the tamarass, but, um, he might need it. So, um, it's, it was a very frustrating conversation. We were all pretty nervous about, um, how we engage in this process in a meaningful way, clearly to protect the bird, um, for the limited time he spends in Mesa County if he comes back. But we also, we need to protect, um, business and economic development. Private property owners that have property along the river didn't even know this was happening. There was no notice, no information out there. So it, it's going to be a serious economic, um, problem in Mesa County.
Well, it'd be a, a very large issue for everyone downstream as well if the tamarass continues to grow. We're trying to do our best to eradicate it, isn't it? It's escaped or amendment is on list A of the state as a noxious weed and needs to be eradicated, et cetera. So they're in conflict in reference to habitat and its issue. So, uh, we need to bring those out and discuss it because, uh, getting tamarass is not a native plant whatsoever. And that should not be part of the critical habitat because it wasn't used naturally. It is adapted to that simply because it's there.
But they can't tell us how many we had forty years ago, twenty years ago, or ten years ago.
We had one, John.
And, and so I said, and they don't, and they don't know how many come up from South America or go home to South America. So my question was, so how do you know they're endangered? Do you have, you don't have any data whatsoever?
Yeah, that's kind of where we are in the Greater Sage Grouse, I mean, how many are there? How are you counting?
Yeah, my rack we did here six months ago, there was a couple of guys coming in and said they were how many million birds, whenever. And I, point fifty years, whatever it was, and I said, so, you know, that's factual, you don't, who counted? Nobody.
We all know it's not about the bird. And what is really, um, disturbing to us is we have a lot of gravel pits along the river. And so if they want to close it down, those gravel pits, we all need gravel to pave in our roads and do an infrastructure and capital improvements. And as they start closing it down, demand's going to get higher and costs are going to raise on counties that barely afford to do the infrastructure that we have, that we have to maintain now. So it's, there'll be some serious consequences.
Yeah, that, that is another conflict in reference to state statute in reference to the extraction of gravels and, and natural resources to do that prior to any other use of the surface. To maximize that and to extract the greatest potential and then, then use your land for other things. So that statute is in place as well, so conflicts everywhere.
You just reminded me that I should probably talk to John Swartout about it, and then get him involved.
And you also should talk to the state's Menlogeology Department in reference to mapping. We've mapped our geology that way in reference to extraction of gravels and where the locations are both along the river and away from the river. And that's a good document to have as well. Because that goes into your energy master plan, which you, we're ahead of us on, but we took a little bit from you and added a little bit more. So we're now giving you, make sure you get that done as well. Do your inventory, your mapping. Very important for your future development of the county or the protection of your county. What else do you have on the yellow-bell cuckoo?
Well, they had one, they said they shipped it in Arizona and they went back to central Mexico for a week or two and then came back. So I said, obviously little buggers are hauling drugs in too.
Mercy, John. Our next subject is RS two four seven seven, which we have done a bunch of work on. We have taken that one and using the Tenth Circuit Court of Appeals requirements, also all of the challenges that are there for the last forty years, it seems like, or fifty years, RS two four seven seven. We have worked with federal agencies. We found BLM to be extremely helpful and willing to assist us. Forest Service, of course, is much more resistant to any kind of changes of access, et cetera. However, our research goes all the way back to the Library of Congress and all the way through from every map that was ever created. And we are doing very well with that particular one. Not that we're going to pave everything. It's to preserve rights of way, which are very important to the West. And that is access to the public lands and across public lands. Our biggest hurdle right now is making sure that our private property owners have bought large sections and tried to close off, as we are aware, that they can't do that. You can't, you can put gate, keep your cattle and what have you in, but it has to be unlocked. That is a stigma that the large landowners have, that they buy these properties and it's theirs and nobody else can go, not unless there's no right of way. And if there's a right of way, we work with them to make sure that it's understood. Do everything we possibly can by posting it, by even looking at putting on fences along the right of way if we have to, or posting it to stay on right of way, private property on both sides. We will do everything we possibly can to protect the individual's property rights, but also the citizen's rights across. It is a challenge and we have Glenn Adams. Who will be at our resource management meeting today too and giving an update. Our sources also asked us to come down and be down there the sixth of February and assisting and showing how we approach it, which is a little bit different than the public lands folks down in Mesa, which was Brandon Saicree who got his start in Mesa County as well doing research with me. And there's, there's some differences on the approaches, but the goal is the same. And that is to keep public lands open for the use by the citizens. And so that's what we're after. Nothing more. We hear lots of things that we're going to pave into the wilderness area, et cetera. And the answer is no, we're not. We're just allowing you the right to go across there in the manner in which it is right now. Hopefully we can spell all of those bad rumors that we have out there. That's RS two four seven seven. Mr. Tipton has the bill. Senator Gardner has the bill. Senator Bennett has the bill. We're hoping to see action this year to take it through. And I'll follow up on that in three weeks in Washington and making sure the natural resource people on one side of the House, the House Representatives, as well as the Senate. And they will both have a bill that they can introduce and co-sponsor.
I don't, I know there's been a lot of debate over the years. Different counties and jurisdictions have tried to come up with methods other than just identifying the roots on maps for kind of preserving the, the public nature of the road. In Montrose County, they, when I was there years ago, they, they talked about maybe taking a blade and putting a blade at least once a year on every one of these routes to, you know, where, where a blade would fit. Some of them they couldn't, but, but trying to document some annual maintenance on each of the routes. Has Garfield County thought of any actions other than putting a map together and identifying the roots?
Maps are for them, but they're not the only answer. Ground proofing is the other one and the use is the other, you know, testimony, et cetera. But maintenance is not a requirement whatsoever.
Yeah.
Maintenance is, again, under Mr. Babett's rule, if you had to maintain it, you had to survey it, you had to do this, that, and that. That's not so. The Tenth Circuit says that it's not even required. So, and then resolutions have been passed saying that we claim all roads and rights of way, et cetera. Well, that's nice. That's, that's your, your political stance. But you actually have to go out and to verify each and every one of them, and that's what we have to do. We also sign them that it is a public right of way, identifying that as a claim, et cetera. And so our signs are out and about. Phase one is completed. And that's what phase two is, is to go back and say, please say on the right of way. And I respect private property rights, et cetera. So it comes in phases and and those hurdles must be done, as well as the documentation. And if you really want to go through the quiet title process, this legislation allows you to do that. Again, the requirement of maintenance and et cetera, it is a misdemeanor. It is not required.
I think more in terms of just establishing evidence that can be photographed. One, one thought I had was, a lot of your evidence is, is verbal testimony from the old timers. And the older we all get, the more we become old timers. And, and perhaps a, one effort might be to go out and actually interview some of these guys that, you know, may not be around two or three years from now. If you, if you end up in court over some of these roads, that if you can kind of have a court reporter and a video camera and interview some of these guys that, that remember, you know, years ago using the roads. And it's, it's maybe kind of an expensive and cumbersome process, but to actually start creating the living record of usage of the roads. Because I think that's where the rubber meets the road is, you know.
There are two organizations that are actually doing that and they're preserving that for, again, the historic preservation, the museums, et cetera, with the living testimony from, from stories on through. They're doing that now, but it is also allowed in the legislation and the Tenth Circuit that those transcripts are evidence and can be admitted. There needs to be a little bit follow-up documentation on that as well, what you're talking about. Because that's called ground proofing, just like we do with the birds and what have you. You've got to do that and tie it all together. So just one piece of evidence is not enough. You've got to tie it together with, with several pieces of documentation. So we're, we're doing that. And that, that again, is still phase one. Phase two is what you have the historical books.
Well, John, you're saying if you have some, I know a couple of old timer founders that proved it. Actually, they were in court to keep some roads open and they were successful fifteen years ago or whatever it was. But somebody like that, we should interview them and document what they're saying and have them point out on the road to the center.
Absolutely, absolutely. And, and you can do it through, through your museums and in reference to your living history that could, that's passed on. And then you get more people involved, then it gives it more credibility. Instead of you just going out with the road and bridge guys and say, say this on this tape. So it's, it's very powerful.
It's great idea.
Anything else on ours?
Yeah, I think there's going to be a new issue in front of us and it's been in the news here lately. And that's going to be, our, our snowmobile users are going to be in front of us because the Forest Service will be, through a lawsuit, I believe, will be looking at snowmobile trails and snowmobile use on, on the forest. And I guess, I saw, or I heard the date was the end of February on that when they're actually going to come up with where snowmobile routes are going to be. And so just knowing the way that it goes, it usually means that trails will be closed. It's going to be, so just something kind of.
Alaska is very interested in that because that is their only means of transportation and those routes have been established, both with dog and snowmobile. They'll be very interested in, in that and in those trails. Again, talk at length, that issue with the Western Interstate Region on RS two four seven seven. And the others are the frozen lakes I'm getting across in certain areas. That was another issue. Rivers are also in RS two four seven seven. They're used by commercial ferries. If you have documentation of ferries or roads leading to a river and a, a, a bridge that was there, raft that was used, et cetera, that crossing then becomes an RS two four seven seven, putting it together. And again, those, like you say, snowmobile used for many, many years across public lands becomes again a right of way.
But happened prior to October twenty-first, nineteen seventy-six?
In some instance, but again, if the, the trail had been used many other times for other purposes, it's still a right of way. So if it was like a foot trail in the summertime and a snowmobile trail in the wintertime, it's still a right of way. We have McFourmile, where they, they use McFourmile in McFourmile Park and Markham, et cetera. And they put them on their maps and it was opened, used to the public for many years. In Colorado, it's nineteen years, to making the twentieth year as a vested right. If you can, so that, that can be used.
Well, and the, the current usage helps to establish the width of the right of way because the case law that will support that, you know, it's, it's, if, if it's, used to be a foot path and now you've got vehicular traffic that, you know, the, the right of way width necessary to support the current usage can be claimed. And then, you know, the, the, the federal land management agencies will, will try to restrict the, the width to something that's not practical with today's, you know, vehicles are even, you know, the wagon ruts aren't wide enough to support the vehicles we've got now. And so they'll try to restrict that, but it's been litigated in the Tenth Circuit.
It has been, and also there is a process in the legislation to allow you to improve an existing right of way for a different purpose, such as you're talking about. But it is a process that you have to go through. You can't just go out and do it.
Yeah.
And there has to be agreement upon what's going to take place, et cetera. But it, it establishes all those and those are the rules that any state can use. Hopefully we can get that legislation through.
Is there anything we can do to help?
Support it when it comes out, but read it first. Do not support it unless you've read it. Do not fight it unless you have read it. I want to inform folks so that they can discuss this particular issue on the code and con and to make sure that they're using the actual legislation and the Tenth Circuit Court of Appeals requirements. So after that, yeah, then we can debate it.
And you're trying to take this to NACO, is that right?
Right. I took it through the Western Interstate Region, which is the fourteen Western states that all supported, including Hawaii, which was very interesting. They do have some issues that were brought up in World War Two in reference to roads and rights of way across different areas. And guess what? They supported. Alaska definitely supported. So it can be a challenge. Hopefully that NACO has taken the position that they will support it as well. We'll see in February. Speaking of going to Washington DC, our next subject is the mental health care management. And hopefully, Rose, you want to talk about that at all?
I'm actually going to refer to our county attorney on this issue.
About a half hour to go.
Yeah, no. As Rose can probably explain in more detail. Mesa County has the primary inpatient and outpatient facilities for these mental health commitments. And as a result, we get quite a few of these commitments referred to us. And what you've got before you shows that through the Mesa County Attorney's Office, we processed seven hundred and four, what they call M eight certifications. And these, these are the, the ninety-day short-term commitments. And, you know, they, they generally, the, the ones that are out of county about, or I think it's a little over forty percent of them come from out of county. So a, a healthcare facility outside of Mesa County will have somebody that they believe needs commitment either on a short-term or long-term basis. So they will refer them to the facilities in Mesa County. And if they meet the criteria, they contact Mesa County Attorney's Office and we file the, the paperwork and go to the hearing. And then some of them, if, if it's warranted and the healthcare professionals determine that, they go to the, the two-month extension, which is an M eleven commitment. And they can do a subsequent M twelve and M fourteen. But if, if those are contested by the patient, it, it goes back to a hearing, which involves us. We, we have a full-time paralegal that does nothing but these mental health commitments. And then one of the attorneys in the office probably spends a third of her time doing this. But as you can see, of the seven hundred and four commitments that, that occurred, a little over half of them were Mesa County's, but fifty-two of them were Garfield County. And you can see, I think Garfield was the largest utilizer of the, the service outside of Mesa County. And it, it's, it can be rather involved and, and obviously it's, it's very time-sensitive. So when we get called, we, we've got to react right then. We can't put it off for a few days. So it, it's, it's resource-intensive. And I guess I, I think in terms of my staffing, it, it, like I said, it's, it's probably one and a third to one and a half time full-time equivalent for an employee dedicated this. And it, I guess from the, the budget issues, I turn it back over to Rose and John.
Well, we have did some research over the last, I would say, six months. Pueblo has the same issue where they take a lot of out-of-county patients and they wind up billing those counties for the time used for their attorney. And I know, and maybe Drew, you can kind of weigh in a little bit on that. It was my understanding from Tom Fisher, our previous administrator before he left, that there was discussion amongst the managers about Mesa starting to either bill the counties for a time or giving those counties the option of, of doing those cases themselves in their own county attorney's office. And so, and then Tom quit on us, so.
Those are the change of employment.
That was the nicest way I've said it thus far, but, but in any event. So Drew, maybe, I don't know where you guys all left off, though.
Sure. I, I, uh, know that we communicated the most recent statistics we had to our county attorney's office. So what I will do is make sure that we communicate these today to Frank. And I think that he assigned one of the deputies to research it so that he could advise the commissioners. So.
It's on your radar?
It's absolutely on the radar and something's being done that I haven't checked up. This will help.
And it's one commissioner that I think we're willing to carry our weight one way or another, so.
We appreciate that.
Take care of the entire western slope.
The people, the lanes were tight. They're wanting to expand. They're in the process of trying to expand. So I, yeah, as you guys all hear the word, the community need is out there. And if this will, if that will help make this grow even more, I don't know. I mean, it's pretty hard.
Case load's not getting any smaller. And, and I guess we've got the staffing availability to handle it. And, and I'm not sure it makes a lot of sense for you all to send an attorney over to the Mesa County Courthouse on one of these deals. As I said, they're time-sensitive and so we're not necessarily saying, hey, you know, have your attorneys do it, but it, it does impact our budget and our, our staffing when we, when we get this volume of out-of-county certifications that go on. uh, when we, when we get this volume of out-of-county certifications that, that go on. So, uh, it's something to consider. Uh, obviously, you know, the, some of these are west slope, but you can see on, on this list, we've got, you know, a few from Jefferson and El Paso and, uh, uh, even some out-of-state ones.
And nineteen come out of state.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have no preference, um, as Pat just articulated, as to whether we do them or you guys do them. I know that there would be, um, I, I think there were some discussions about maybe Garfield being interested in doing their own, um, within your county attorney's office, but as Drew said, you guys are still researching it, so I don't know where that all ended up. But it, it makes no difference to us, we just, um, we just want you, you guys to be aware of the issue and, and how it's kind of taxing our county attorney's office. That's all I have on that, John.
Well, it is an impact, and we had to, to make sure that we dug that out. It's a challenge for all of us, and I think that, uh, Pueblo State Hospital has a little room, a little. We really appreciate it, you opened up your facility and have you, so that we can benefit from it. So we'll share what we can and pick up the, the slack while we can as well.
Thank you.
Broadband, something about broadband. Something that's going out of state.
Asked to have that put on the agenda, that was a chair of AGNC that's come to our attention, man. There are funds available, and evidently, the counties to the north of us and the counties to the south of us have got a grant in DOLA to do a, uh, regional needs assessment. But Mesa and Garfield County, which is right in the middle, haven't done that. So I guess I would like to see, and I assume you would be, interest in aligning to DOLA for funds, to do a grant, to have that done.
In talking to DOLA, they seem interested in maybe possibly Mesa and Garfield kind of being a mini-region to ourselves, instead of having to join with one of the other regions.
Well, theirs is down there.
Well, we, what I thought we were going to wind up having to do is pick one of the others to probably join. But, but the way they're talking is we could go and apply ourselves, and we're probably more better aligned possibly with each other than the others anyway, it's easier to do two than seven. But, uh, there's definitely interest in DOLA, as long as we're willing to act towards a mini-region to apply for some of those, those funds. There's a lot of interest right now in Grand Junction at municipal level to get themselves intended for SB one fifty-two, which allows more freedom for the municipalities and counties for that matter, if we decide to go that route, to be able to, um, do a little more as far as what they call the middle mile with the internet, to apply for the grants, whole building infrastructure, things like that. I don't think, I'm just a commissioner decision, but I don't think we're interested in going in the cable TV business or the, despite recent headlines. We're not interested in going to that business, but we're certainly interested in helping build infrastructure if we can, if there's a way to, to help do that.
Yeah, I read, um, I read local counties doing the infrastructure and stuff, and absolutely making it sure that everybody understands we're not going to that business, franchise business, et cetera. It's only that we want to have the infrastructure, only infrastructure, and, uh, make sure those are land use in the process. But that only opens it up to competition to, to utilize.
Exactly.
Uh, I think that's what we try to do as well. This is, this money also is coming out of the initiative of the governor, thirty million dollars a year, something like that, on that grant. Mr. Sampson needs to research where that money comes from, but anyway, it is, it is under one of the distribution formulas under initiative for the governor, which is outside the identification of that initiative, uh, I mean, the, uh, specific use. But it's there. Do we wish to utilize it or not, that's, that's a decision. So that goes back to another letter that we all sent in, and refers to the, uh, using certain funds and, uh, taking away from the original use, this is part of that, thirty million dollars a year that is used for the purposes. Just so everybody's aware.
I did not know that, that's interesting. I've heard Medicaid or for Tiber, I had not heard broadband though.
Yeah, broadband, flood mitigation, um, solar energy, um, initiatives, all of the governor's energy office, et cetera, all come from the distribution formula that we all receive.
Everything, but it impacts.
So it should be statewide, and again, it's a state interest. So broadband is a state interest as well as the other, uh, or initiative to be a quick place.
Is real local county up and running on a ballot up there to?
To do infrastructure work for some infrastructure hats or something? They, they, they built several towers and, and different, uh, infrastructural purposes.
So from what I'm reading, you're very interested in that, so Drew, let's get that on the agenda too, so we can talk about that.
Pursuing a DOLA grant with Mesa County?
With Mesa County for the, uh, broadband, for general needs assessment, I think it's like that.
Should talk about that as well.
And, and to join, um, do council, do you think that we need to do a, an MOU or an intergovernmental agreement to, to make sure that that is in place and go forward with the DOLA grant, that we are acting as a, a joint effort?
That probably would make sense, I think.
Can we work with you guys?
I don't know, you two can work together, but me, you can work together.
Getting to the honest part of the meeting.
Can we work together, John?
Can we work, right, discuss that, see if it's necessary.
See there? Seems like you guys got the problem.
Well, we have a form.
Thank you. Center of Excellence, Mr. Sampson, that is in your, uh, tent?
The Center of Excellence, thank you very much, Mesa County, Grand Junction, for your letters. Uh, we, we are going forward, we have the governor meeting, the lady is going to be in rifle. If you would like to come Tuesday at one o'clock, Tuesday the third. I don't know for sure where that's going to be yet, but I'll try and forward the meeting. But if you would like to be there, uh, Melissa, I believe is her name, who's the temporary chairman, you, I think you medicate me once, she's going to be there. And, uh, hopefully, we're going to, uh, discuss with her, so on and so forth, uh, what we've done, so on and so forth.
Mr. Sampson? Just, just 'cause we have a viewing audience and it's recorded, some folks might not know what the Center of Excellence is.
Okay, the Center of Excellence, the Colorado State Legislature, the General Assembly passed, uh, a bill to create that, basically for research and development, uh, wildfire fighting, and so on and so forth. So-
Kevin, do you have any, can you have any more on that?
Sure, um, like, uh, Commissioner Sampson said, there was a name-one legislation in two thousand and fourteen that allowed, um, the Division of Fire Prevention and Control to do two things. And one was to go out and purchase or contract actual aerial firefighting, uh, assets, if you will. The second piece was to create the Center of Excellence, which is, uh, as Mike described, uh, to do research and development on aerial firefighting, uh, techniques that could, uh, assist in addressing some of the horrendous wildfires Colorado has experienced in recent years. So, uh, really, the Center of Excellence would be a mechanism that would bring some science and data, and focused research on the best practices, uh, for aerial firefighting. And it would, uh, uh, provide support to Colorado's growing, uh, aerial firefighting fleet. So basically, uh, improve the products and the procedures that we use to fight wildfires and, uh, bring R and B to create innovative technologies to address that. So, you know, sample projects might be, uh, aerial firefighting at night. You know, a lot of times they shut down firefighting operations at the end of the day and wait till the next morning to get back at it, uh, when that could be attacked from the air, uh, at night. You know, better ways to locate ground resources from the air. And also, uh, what is known as UAS, which is an acronym for unmanned aerial, uh, systems, other words drones. I mean, uh, drones and airports still mix, they have just five mile, mile separation, but, uh, we believe the RIL, which is the ca- call letters for Garfield, uh, rifle, Garfield County Airport, is, is located, you know, very advantageous, they do both the aerial stuff and, uh, the unmanned aerial, uh, stuff. There's a lot of uncontrolled airspace around our airport. And, uh, we don't have the level of congestion that you find at, uh, commercial airports. We have a very strong general aviation airport. In fact, we just heard yesterday, uh, the third busiest, uh, general aviation airport in Colorado. Over a million gallons of fuel were consumed, uh, there last year. So, uh, we think we're well positioned. The applicants are Garfield County-
Collins and Colorado Springs.
Yeah.
And Rifle Park.
And our partnership is with the city rifle and the Colorado River and Fire Rescue. And so as joint applicants, we're hoping to land this, um, at the rifle, Garfield County Airport. Kind of this economic development effort. I think eventually, uh, there'll be twenty-five jobs located at this research and development facility. And it, uh, it's going to get started, uh, later this year, July first, I heard is the kickoff date. And we're currently preparing our, uh, response to their request for information, which is due on February sixth. Up to a hundred-page document laying out all of what we think are the advantages for locating the rifle.
CMC is a partner as well?
We are not, Collins. We have CMC, we have Colorado Northwest Community College, we have, uh, Colorado Mesa University. We have, uh, Met- is it Metro State in Denver?
Yes.
We have letters of, uh, recommendations from them. We've had a great input, as well as the city and, and county Mesa, Grand Junction. We really appreciate the effort. We feel that we have some real pluses than the other two buildings. So we're hoping that, uh, it can be, I mean, it'll be a regional center, and it'll be a big plus for the western slope. AGMC issued all this endorsement, so, so, we're really pushing for it.
Fantastic, good luck.
Any other question on that? Well, we have fifteen minutes for citizens.
Well, I have one more.
Oh, you have one there?
Yeah.
You have to make quite a- You waited. All right, now.
You have- I'd like to, um, talk about, uh, natural gas, oil and gas prices, natural gas prices. It affects our county, it affects your county, it affects our economic development. We are, uh, again, at a low, uh, and we're seeing, uh, we're seeing consequences of that. Uh, we, we were going to participate together on the, uh, jump to the, to the Rome Piance Jump, uh, to the, uh, I can't remember where he's, the party's. And that, that, because of, uh, what's happened, um, you know, with oil prices, that, that's been put on hold. But we'd like to just see a, I mean, and I think we may see gas prices low for two or three years until, um, there's more manufacturing in the United States, more conversion to natural gas electric plants, exporting, we just, we've just signed a, or we're going to sign a letter on Monday for the, um, export, uh, terminal in, uh, Jordan Cove, it's toothed bay, and that is, uh, exporting. So all those things that are, and, and the use of natural gas on, for, uh, vehicles. And that, that may, because of the price of gasoline coming down and diesel, that may even go on to a back burner. But it's just, uh, all those things we can do to, uh, support this natural resource, I think are extremely important. Commissioner Sampson, maybe AGNC may be going to Calgary possibly to talk to the owners of the Ruby Pipeline. And we're very supportive of that. Just, just, I, I just, how we can work together to support, uh, this industry and this, uh, natural resource that we have in our county, I think is important, so.
When is, do you have the data, uh, both of you going to that, are you, are you worried?
No, it's June ninth, it'll be eleven.
So, I think both of us could go, you want to go with either of them? I think that's something we really, really are interested in protecting, development, uh, whatever.
Absolutely. I think it would be great to have other commissioners come as well, not just Mesa County.
Yeah, I'd like to see, uh, if Commissioner Sampson represents a unit, so, so, definitely natural for that. Leaves me, I don't have a passport, you provide.
Really?
You need a passport to go to Canada instead of working on that.
To Will County.
To Will County as well. That'd be good.
But, no, just, I, I, I don't know what other things we can do. I don't know if you, if, if that, uh, manufacturer was looking at converting natural gas to, uh, diesel is still on the radar in Mesa County or not. All those, whatever we can do to, um, support this industry is important, so.
Absolutely.
We agree, hundred percent.
John, Rose, anything that you want to talk about, was it on the agenda?
I'm, I'm obviously supporting him because my wife said I pass bill would be high.
I, I've noticed that I use more, but my bill, I'm, I use less, but my bill keeps getting higher, but the price gets lower.
I think it sells out.
I think it's the middle guy, I don't think it's the producer or, or the government, uh, has to be that middle guy. Citizens, you got ten minutes now, Mr. Sampson, Rose took up ten minutes there. How about anybody else? Staff members? Drew?
Just wanted to say thank you to the commissioners for sending Mr. Wooden to, uh, CCI, uh, in advance of his official, um, elevation there. And he's already participating with the Association of Colorado County Administrators, administrators. And congratulations on your choice of county attorneys, Mr. Coleman, we've met. And I wanted to introduce to you, uh, the Garfield County Deputy County Manager, Kevin Batchelder, who gave you the report on the Center for Excellence. Um, Kevin is an ICMA credentialed manager, he's twenty-six years now of, uh, of public administrative experience. And most recently, for fourteen years, was the town manager for Silverthorne, preceded by, uh, fourteen years at, in Mendota Heights, uh, Minnesota, but outside of Minneapolis. But he has Colorado roots, including education at Colorado State, grew up there, Fort Collins, so.
That, that makes him imminently qualified.
Thanks, thanks to-
Jumped up the ladder there.
Thanks, thanks to all five of you for letting me do that.
Welcome.
Anybody else?
Kirby. Spoke very briefly for Mesa County especially. Uh, just a reminder that we have our third annual Energy Environment Symposium. Please put that on the calendar. We had a hundred and forty folks from local governments all of Colorado, from Garfield County, Friday night.
So what days are that?
Wednesday, Thursday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. Few days, all day?
It was good, I went last year, I mean, I had a belief in some of it, but it's what I was there, I didn't worry about it.
Both days, one thing between everybody and a free dinner was to stop asking the workers. We ran thirty minutes over, asked questions, and made both days, so it was, it felt pretty great to see. It'll be, uh, it'll be eight to, uh, it'll be the, uh, no, it'll be at Grand, yeah, yes, Grand River Hospital. Thank you, sir, I didn't, Grand, Grand River Hospital.
Always a good evening.
In rifle.
I only have one, but I'll get you one, we want you there. As I can tell you, the, I told Kirby, because we worked hard on this, and they'll be, when you have people on a Friday, Thursday was the same, you have people on Friday, and it's supposed to end at five, and they're all stayed, and they're still in, ask, no one's leaving, and they're still asking questions at five o'clock on a Friday. To me, that's a pretty good part of it.
No, look, I mean, I really, it was very, you know, make-
Be a figure better than, could learn a lot, Mr.
Anybody else?
The last thing I would just like to say, Mr. Chairman, is thank you. I think we're going to do this at least, on a yearly basis, at least, if, if we need to. But we truly appreciate all that, you know, whether it's AGNC, working in the region, or whatever it is, working, whatever. I think we're definitely, you know, you're going to feel a strong relationship, close, so thank you for all of that.
I would not be opposed to twice a year.
Sure.
And the final thanks to Stuart and, and the town parachute for the use of their town hall. And they're, we really appreciate it, for like the coffee making and all that, or- By the way, the old mill raising cookies were really excellent.
By the way, the Old Mill Raisin Cupcake was really excellent. If you didn't get one, there were only three of them. I got one.
Under the, you know what, we'll even buy dinner next time.
That sounds like great.